Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order regular city council meeting from Monday, May 5, 2025, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you take roll call, please.
Mayor Jacobs.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Dold.
Here.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Item four is our approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, May 5 council meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. We have no recognitions, no county or state officials. We do have a presentation. I'd like to bring up our new treasurer, Ms. Shannon Shepherd. And I think Mr. Gibbons might want to say a few words.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yep, just like to welcome Shannon to Garden City. We're very excited about her and her being a member of our team. She has an extensive municipal history, particularly in municipal finance. She is deputy treasurer in Westland, recently the comptroller in Dearborn Heights. And we are super excited to have her. And I just was going to give her a chance to introduce herself, to council and everybody else.
Thank you. Like Tim said, I have been in municipality for almost a decade now. I'm looking forward to bringing that experience to Garden City and collaborating with all of you and meeting our city's goals and serving our residents. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice meeting you, Ms. Shepherd.
You as well. Thanks.
Glad you're here.
Okay, item eight is community events. I'll bring up Mr. Miller, our DDA director slash Community Development Director.
Hi, good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm here tonight for the Lucky Squirrel. Kelly Bailey, our number one volunteer, is also here for the Lucky Squirrel. I just wanted to talk about our first event is coming up, May 17. And what we're calling that is Bag Day. And if you look on the screens, you can see that we have a registration QR code for a bag. That's Zeffy the Squirrel holding the, holding that bag. This is the bag that you're going to register for. So you'll go on the QR code and then you can register your email for the bag. Show us the QR code on, on that day and then we'll have your information. We're going to communicate with you about future events. And you're going to have a bag that you can fill up shopping at the Lucky Squirrel event. On May 17, from 10 until 3, we have 150 vendors signed up for the event already, so we are full. Actually, I'm taking a waiting list if anybody is interested to be on the waiting list. So our first day, we're looking forward to a spring event. So come on out, register for your bag and come see Zeffy the Squirrel at the Lucky Squirrel event. So, and I've named Zeffy, actually. How I got, got the name is Zeffy is the program that we use to register your emails. And so I kind of thought it was a good name for Zeffy. So, all right, thank you. And then Kelly's going to tell you about the event that she comes and volunteers for.
Well, I'll be there as I have been for, I don't even know how many years now, I think about 10, going on, collecting boots and monetary donations for local veterans organizations. This year, it'll probably be Veterans Haven again over in Wayne. I look forward to seeing everybody. I've already been checking the weather. We're looking at 70-degree weather. I literally have been checking because it has to be a great day. Hope everybody will be there and bring me some boots. And if you don't have boots, money is acceptable, too. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. Item 11 is our consent agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 7, including 7A, as presented.
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dold. I would like to make a comment on the, we've had some comments made about the Compensation Commission and the minutes that are right into it, and they're from 2023. This committee meets every two years. And we can't accept them into our, we can't accept them or approve them until they're right into their commission, which is every two years. So when you read something, it's from 2023, the meeting they just had, we'll get it in 2027, and we'll be doing it all over again. But it's, we go through this every two years where people get confused by it and say, what happened here? And it's from two years ago. So hopefully, I explained that properly. Any other comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Onto our action items. We have a grant agreement for community energy management. And Mr. Miller, you're going to be busy for a few things here.
I brought my package, so, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight before you is a grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Eagle, which is part of the environment, Great Lakes and Energy. And I wrote a grant about a year ago to work on the LED conversion of streetlights. And so they offered these grants to communities that are eligible to work on getting more of our grid into the LED streetlights. So luckily, we were awarded the grant, and it will cover about 500 streetlights to get converted. Also, I think you do know that I applied for another grant that we won't get until 2028. But with both of those grants, all of our streetlights will be converted to LED and we'll have, of course, comes with that, of course, energy savings and the reduction of changing out the light bulbs and all of that. So I am excited that we got the grant. And this is, you know, a big step going forward to helping reduce our overall bills. And also, of course, the city doesn't have to front the money in order to save the money. The grant is doing that, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotis.
I move to approve the attached grant agreement between the city of Garden City and the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy for LED streetlight conversion in the amount of 97,991, and authorize Matthew Miller, the Community Development Director, to execute the agreement.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes. Comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Dold.
Mr. Miller, do we know how many non-LED streetlights we have? Approximately?
Not really. About 1,000. So this one took care of 500. The next, the other grant was about 450 or so.
Okay. And you said this is a reimbursable grant, correct?
Yes.
So do you have a timeline on when we might be getting started on it? Or is there a deadline to finish it with this grant?
There is a two-year deadline, and we're looking at trying to get it started this year. I've been in contact with Detroit Edison, who's the vendor to do all of the work, and then we will get moving. I, as soon as we got the grant, I made contact with our, our energy planner to get moving. I've had a lot of communications with her. I think, you know, I think we'll be able to get moving very quickly.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Those were my only questions, but two things, I want to thank you for doing this, for finding it for us.
You're welcome.
My other statement, though, I have to make a statement, especially in lieu of the fact that DTE is once again trying to raise our rates. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that we have to, and it's grant money, but it's still taxpayer money, that we have to go to this length in order to, we're essentially paying DTE to upgrade our services. And I, I just have to put that out there. It's ridiculous. It really is. Wonderful that you found it, really glad you did, but it's sad.
Thank you. Councilmember Carefotis.
Before Mr. Miller went and got this grant, I know that I had mentioned it a couple years ago and did some research. And there's several other cities I know much larger than us, and they were able to get everything done within a year. So I was really happy to hear that they're going to start soon. I know the city of Ann Arbor did theirs all in one summer, the whole entire city. And then any idea of the savings that we're going to get by changing, once they're all changed out?
It's roughly about $8,500 a year in savings.
A year? Okay. Those are the only questions I had.
Further comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
No, I just want to kind of mention the same thing. I can see with the 8,500 savings, I can, I understand, I guess, why the city hasn't moved forward with this. With the 8,500 savings, that's like a 10-year payback. It just, that doesn't make, doesn't make any sense. However, going for the grant, that makes sense because we pay back day one because we're not putting up the money for the construction. So I'd also like to thank you, Mr. Miller, for looking out for the city and looking for a grant to take care of this.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Carefotis.
The paperwork says grant plus match. We're not matching anything, right?
Correct. It's not a match.
Okay.
It's not a match.
Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item two, bid award for our sidewalk gap, gap grant program. Mr. Miller.
Yes, before you this evening, we went out to bid for the sidewalk gap program, and we did receive a number of bidders. We received a total of nine bids for the, for the project. And we're recommending OCG as the low bidder. But if you will look at further on the bid sheet, we also did it to receive quantity amounts for each unit so that we were going to be able to determine the estimated amount for the first phase, but then to keep the same quantities for the unit pricing to continue the program through the $2.1 million that we were awarded. So today, before you is our bid award to make that recommendation for the low bid. But the low bid was kind of an estimated amount for units so that when, so that we were able to receive bids to be equal for everybody, so that everyone bid for 150,000 square foot, all of that. So we were able to determine the unit price. So the unit price for our first estimate on the phase is 1.3, but the total amount is 2.1 million that the grant is covering for the installation of the gap sidewalks.
Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
I move to approve the bid award to OCG of Detroit, Michigan, in the amount of 1.3, oh, I'm sorry, in the amount of $1,381,360, with a unit pricing specified in the bid received on April 22, 2025, for the 2025-2026 Sidewalk Gap Grant Program. And at the city's discretion, authorize the completion of the program at the same unit price up to 2.1 million.
Support.
Support. Support from Councilmember Witt. I do have a comment. Do we know, and this might be from Mr. Cruz, do we know anything about OCG? I know lately with some of our low bids, we've ran into a few.
We do know a little bit, and I think Alan will be able to.
Either one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we have a few engineers in our office that have worked with OCG, and everyone said that they've worked successfully completing each project. They show up on time, and they have a good reputation for good workmanship. They also do a lot of work for DTE. And I called the, the head of DT, Barbara Rickwalder, and asked her how they perform, and she said stellar, and that's why they keep them as a contractor. I also made sure that they're committing the proper resources to complete the grant project, which is very important. You can't just not show up for half the year and then hope to finish the second year. And so they've assured us that they're dedicating multiple crews to this project. And they're actually happy that it's a larger project than, than we anticipated, and they're ready to go this month, they said.
Okay. Anything else on that? Okay.
We had discussed all of that, of course, about the company and to make sure that they'd be able to meet our requirements.
Thank you. Further comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember King.
I had some concerns on, especially the timeline, and completed so much, so much work in the two years. But I think when I asked Mr. Miller, we can, if we don't feel they're going to complete it on time, we, we do have the option to terminate the contract or bring a second contractor onboard.
Yes, we do.
Okay, just want to verify.
Just so you know, all our contracts for Garden City, you can terminate at any time with no cause. It gives Garden City that power. So that's the way our contracts are written. And if we decide that they're not performing well, we can bring in another contractor right away without, without any cause. So.
Of course, hoping that's not the case, but yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Dold.
Mayor. Oh, did I have that look on my face?
I should be looking.
This might be a kind of a silly question, I guess. When you get, when you open up the bids and you're looking, and OCG was our lowest bidder, and then you say you contacted DTE, you spoke to some of their references also, I'm sure, do you do that with the other bidders or only the lowest bidder?
Well, yeah, I know the other bidders. I personally have not worked with OCG, so I have to make sure we're doing our due diligence. And other people at our office have worked with them. But again, our primary focus is on the low bidder because we want to save the city money.
Well, of course.
Yeah.
But I was just wondering, the couple, the couple that are at the bottom there, if you would talk to both of them and, you know, because there could be something that recommends the, the next highest bidder. It's $100,000 difference, I know, but I, it was just a question that popped into my head, if, if we do that with any of the other bidders or just automatically only do it with the lowest bidder.
Well, yeah, I, I try to avoid contacting the second and third because it gets their hopes up, and we're not, you know, and they may mudsling. So if it's the low bidder and we're geared towards recommending them, we're focusing our efforts and doing our due diligence and checking all the references. But we, we pretty much know all these contractors. Retondo, the second low bidder, has a current contract with Garden City, has never shown up. And they're working feverishly right now for the second part of their contract. And so it was surprising to see them bid on this project.
Wanting more work.
So in this case, there definitely was no reason to, okay?
Agreed.
That was just a question that popped in my head, so.
And that owner called me right after the bid and asked, you know, is there a possibility to go with him instead of the low bidder? And I said no right away, you know.
Sounds like with good reason, yes.
I don't care how good you are, you got to show up.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes.
Thank you. I was just ahead of question, since we have had problems. How do we monitor the progress?
We'll be.
Well, you know, when they start work.
So, so Bucelli and our company are handling the administration and inspection for the project. And Bucelli's actually marking the areas, and we're surveying the areas to make sure that the sidewalks are put in the right place. So we'll be in constant communication with that contractor and the progress. And you're right, if we see they're slowing down, we're, we're going to say, you know, we'll, we'll go out to bid for a second contract, and that's our threat to them. But I'm pretty confident that, that they'll perform.
Thank you. Further comments?
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Just double-checking maybe, Mr. Miller, Mr. Gibbons. Did we already submit or get, receive the contracts for Hennessy and Bucelli? Or is this part of the normal administration process with our city engineer?
It's part of the normal administration, so we have a blanket price that for both Bucelli and.
That's all I wanted to make sure.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotis.
Do we know how many houses still don't have a sidewalk?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, so I.
But do we, we have it somewhere, right?
Yes, yes.
And just reiterating that we're starting the neighborhoods by the schools and the neighborhood that we talked about last meeting over, like, the west side.
Southwest quadrant.
Southwest, okay.
Yes, yes, starting at Radcliffe and going east.
Okay. And then does our bid include a performance bond?
Yes.
Projects.
And it'll be signed?
Have a performance bond.
And it'll be signed?
Yeah.
Okay. And then this is not the time, well, they're going to start, how soon?
They said they're ready to go in May, so they're ready.
When are we talking about how it's going to be decided, like?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna start in that quadrant and go, you know, and start to move east.
No, my question is, who's going to get them? So if someone says, I don't want it, like, is it everybody who wants one gets one, or what?
Well, okay, I see what you mean. So we are going to start, the Communications Department is going to start to put together kind of a sidewalk section of the, our website, and then we're going to start to, I, there's the dots. I knew the map was going to show up eventually. Thank you from downstairs. So we're going to, of course, start where the dots are. If somebody wants to object to not having one, it's not an automatic, I don't want one. We will do, we will do a review of, you know, what is the reason, number one. Number two, if it's the last section of the street that doesn't have one, I think a sidewalk should go in. It is the city's right of way, and the purpose of the grant is to make it a walkable community. Just objecting to it because I don't want it is, is, I just don't think a valid reason, in my opinion, so.
I think that we had a discussion about that already, so there was plenty of people that came up and gave reasons why they didn't want it, because they had to take trees down or go around this or, or go around that. So I mean, we talked about it, and we said we were going to talk about it again. So never when we said we were going to stop the other ordinance where we were forcing people to get it, did we say, we were going to just say, oh, yeah, we're getting a grant, we're still forcing you to do it. So I think there needs to be some discussion there.
Ultimately, these are case-by-case basis.
That's what I'm asking, yeah.
And there's no real, because we've battled, bantered this back and forth. Ultimately, we got this $2.5 million to put sidewalks in Garden City to make it a more walkable, travelable city. If, just because someone doesn't want one, they, they want to interrupt the ability to walk down one of our streets in our city, especially in the southwest quarter, southwest quarter, which is, it's going to be tough just based on the fact that I don't want it. However, we're certainly going to consider any, you know, terrain issues or if it's, we're putting in a sidewalk where it has access to nothing else. And each, so it has to be considered within the broader plan, and will really fall within the administrative decision at the time and based on that piece of property.
Well, my concern is that there's no ordinance requiring them to get that, so what's the legalities of them just coming home from work and there's a sidewalk put in and they didn't want it?
Well, that's the city's easement, so.
I get it, but we've never just done it before. We had to make an ordinance last time. So what's the difference now when we don't have an ordinance?
Well, the ordinance last time compelled people to place that on their own, at their own expense. And we used our easement authority and our ability to assess to make that accomplishment. Here, we're going to utilize our easement to place sidewalks to make it more walkable. And, and how each property fits within the plan and its own design will really weigh heavy on whether it is, they're allowed to object or not, or, well, they can object, of course, but whether we determine to go forward with the sidewalk or not. You know, we would, given, we've got two years to accomplish a lot of work here, and.
I'm not disagreeing that it needs to be done. I'm just saying, if someone, if we're just going to put it on our website, I don't think that's enough. If we.
Oh, no, people will be notified.
They're going to be notifying.
So I was asking, do we know the houses that don't have a sidewalk? And we're going to contact them and say, you know, this is our plan.
Absolutely, yes, I'm sorry.
Not, that's what I'm saying, I don't want someone to have no idea, and then come home and there's a sidewalk in, and you're going to be the first one that gets a phone call, and then I'll be the second one.
There, there will be no, without notice, magical sidewalks appearing in people's front yards. We will absolutely, through Bucelli, and, and actually, I believe that's, that's part of their, part of their contract, is to notify each individual property owner who is.
And it is in writing, or is it, you're knocking on the door, or what's?
We're going to have a letter prepared that they'll, they'll leave there at the property. We're going to start, you know, we're going to start the process, and, you know, it'll all shake out as to where, where the sidewalks go, who's going to want one. We're going to look at elevations, trees, irrigation, all those items I talked about. I mean, I want to, if somebody, you know, contacts me and they don't want one, we're going, I'm not going to say yes automatically. We are going to review the reasons and what each lot contains. You know, hopefully, you know, it's, hopefully, we'll have smooth 95% and the 5% will.
I just know, like, part of those sections over there on, I want to say, like, Pierce, those trees go right to the street. So there's some houses that will have to have, like, 20 trees cut down, and they've already been here and talked about how they don't want a sidewalk, they don't want to do that, that kind of thing.
Yes, yes.
There are methods where they can trim the roots and still put the sidewalk in without removing trees. No one wants to remove trees. Contractors don't want to do it. It's a huge undertaking, so you're right, we're going to avoid that as much as possible.
Okay. And I have one more question. You talked about, you guys are going to be looking to making sure the sidewalks are put in correctly. I know there's a couple people that had sidewalks put in that didn't use the city contractor, like, the house sold, and they used their own contractor. And the sidewalks are on a hill, so the sidewalks are like this. I mean, everywhere that we go, right, it's going to be proper, so someone ADA or whatever, it's going to be flat. We're not doing any tilted stuff.
Yes.
And who's doing the inspections? You guys?
Bucelli.
Bucelli's doing the inspections, okay. All right, that's all I had.
So you're right, all these new sidewalks have to be ADA compliant, and that's a requirement of the grant, and our specifications and drawings reflect that. So Bucelli will administer the inspection to ensure that happens also.
Thank you. Further comments from table?
I do have one more, Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
Can I, do we have a way to verify that the residents are going to get notified? Because I know one of the road projects where my parents live, nobody was notified on the entire stretch of road, and the roads have, or.
Yeah, Moeller got paved quickly, or Craig, or whatever it was, right?
Yeah, but, I mean, I told people that a notice was coming when it was going to happen because we had the delay last year, and then it was, you know, three weeks later that it actually got done, but nobody knew. My dad left in the morning, and the road was ripped up by the time he got home that night, so.
We, each address will, you know, will have a record of the address in the letter that they receive.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Further comments? Yeah, I got a little bit. Mayor Protem Dold.
The only issue I had with the ordinance was we was forcing people to pay for something that was going on government property. That, that just burned me like unbelievable. But other than that, I think this is a, this will work. But I do have an issue when I'm going throughout the city, I see so many sidewalks that with puddles in the wintertime icing up. Is this a grade problem? Is it a contractor problem? Because it's time and time again.
It's often, yeah, it's the grade, though.
I live in Canton, there's a bunch of sidewalks. I think what happens is, part of the reason is the grass grows, and sometimes that drainage doesn't get past the grass, and it holds water. And it's, it's difficult to remedy, you know. You grade the 2%, hoping it's gonna go on the lawn and absorb, but it doesn't always happen, you know, and that's why you see puddles. And it wasn't because it wasn't constructed properly. It's, it's the proper 2%, but, you know, the denseness of the lawn sometimes prevents the water from going into the lawn, you know.
Okay.
But I get what you're saying, you know.
That's all I had, thank you.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I know previously when we did a lot of roadwork, we put sidewalks in on certain streets, like, within a year, those sidewalks were already sinking. And when we came back and asked the contractor, they said there was no guarantee on concrete. Is there any guarantee on these sidewalks?
I think there's a, it's a one or two year-
It's a one year, I believe.
Yeah, it's a one-year guarantee, yeah.
Okay.
And we hold money and their bond to go after them in the, in the event that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Hughes.
Quick question. Are we able, if somebody wants to replace some sidewalk or something like that, is it gonna be worked into the program or anything like that, anyway?
Well, they, no, it will only be for the gap program.
There's a lot of work here.
Yeah.
We really wanna focus on-
I just figured it might come up.
Mayor, I have one more question. Actually, two more.
Go ahead, council, councilmember.
Councilmember Hughes is saying, is if someone's getting a sidewalk along the front or they only have like, some houses only have like three or four, if the next two are really bad and they say, "Hey, can you replace them at my cost?" Can they do that?
They can, if they work out an agreement with the contractor-
That's what I'm saying, they can ask them.
Yes, is that, is that what you mean? Yeah, yes.
Okay, and then-
You can do that separately, so.
Right, separately. I did have a resident ask me this week if they're getting a sidewalk, they have a horseshoe driveway that is asphalt, is that sidewalk gonna go, they're gonna break up their asphalt or the sidewalk just goes to the asphalt, to the asphalt and, and then?
The concrete has to continue through their driveway, so that asphalt has to be removed and replaced with concrete. And the reason for that is, the slopes on asphalt may be different and may not meet the 2% and may not be ADA compliant for the grant.
So do they get something that says if their driveway gets messed up, like, how do we, you're gonna, they're gonna have to go in and cut this person's driveway up? So do they get some kind of?
Well, the contractor does have an insurance policy in case there is a, you know, destruction on private property.
Okay, yeah, that was one of their concerns.
But the contractor is required to restore that property.
That's, that was my question.
Any damages, they have to buy the contract, restore that property-
Okay.
To its original condition.
Okay, same thing with other concrete driveways, are they getting that new portion that's a new concrete driveway?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments from the table? From the public?
Just a question, basically. You spent, you talked about 1.3 for half of the city, you only got two. When you get on the other side and you, you use up the rest of the money, what happens to the people that didn't get a sidewalk? How are you gonna explain to them, "My neighbor got one, I, I got one, he didn't"? If the money runs out, who's gonna pay for, who's gonna pay for to fill in the rest of it?
We don't have, we don't have the funds for that.
I know you don't have the funds for that, that's why, that's my question.
We don't know.
Why don't you think somebody needs to find out? Because when the people come up and they, everybody's getting a sidewalk and all of a sudden we don't get one, then what?
That was one of the, that was one of the dilemmas that we had as to how we were gonna administer the grant, we were gonna see. Well, it's, it's not a discussion, if you have more comments, go ahead.
No, I'm just saying, somebody's gonna get kicked off if they don't get one and they want one. And you ain't got the money to give it to them unless you come to me and want my money. And I've been maintaining mine for 57 years, I'm not giving nobody else a sidewalk. Plus, I don't know why you don't just count all the gaps, figure out how much you got, how many gaps you got, and, and if you need another $50,000, you pay $10, you pay $10, you pay $10. But we're gonna finish the whole city instead of fooling around with it.
Thank you.
I think our city manager has something to say about that.
Oh, I just that, you know, if we do get to the point where we've run out of grant money, you know, it, I, my intent would be to continue to pursue more grant money to finish the project, you know, that, you know, we're not done. Of course, we would feel, hey, we owe some people some sidewalks if we can, I mean, not in a legal sense, but just in a, hey, what are we gonna do? We're gonna try to do the best by every house we possibly can. So if we can put $2.5 million worth of sidewalks in and that, we come up short, then we will go out and continue to pursue some, some funding source to continue doing the project. And if we can, we can, we can't, we can't. I mean, I, you know, I said my displeasure with the fact that we had, there was someone who had to put their, last person who had to put their own sidewalk in under our previous ordinance, that's just, that's how it worked out. I wish it wasn't that way, I wish this grant saved that last person, at least, but it didn't. So I don't wanna let the desire to do, to let perfect be the enemy of good. And if we, we finish with some sidewalks left to go, we'll do our best to find a funding source for that, you know, but I'm, I'm confident we're gonna cover a good section of the city and, and those that are left, we'll do our best.
Mayor.
Councilmember Carefotos.
Regarding that, we know how many houses there are and we know what they bid. Do we have any idea approximately how many we're gonna be able to do if we know how much money we're spending?
Not, not 100%, I, we'll look at it again.
But I'm just saying, we, we gotta bid for so many and we know how many houses, we should have some kind of idea.
But there is, this is a large undertaking with a lot of unknowns, because when you go to put that sidewalk in, what obstacles are, is the contractor gonna face? You know, what, what estimates, were they perfect, were they not? So we have tried, we, we both tried to sit down and figure that and we keep running into obstacles, but what if, but what if? And if we put a number to it, it's not really fair. What we can do is report back to how many we've done and how the progress is going at certain points. But I really can't say, yep, X amount of sidewalks are gonna get done for sure, because it could be more, it could be less. It just kinda really depends on, you know, every time we enter one of these easements to put it in, there's gonna be a different circumstance there. Some of them might be particularly easy and they might go smoother, some of them might require going around trees, going up inclines and adjusting pitches and going through asphalt driveways. So there's all kinds of unique circumstances that could drive one way or the other. And we're hoping for the best and we'll continue, we'll report as they come in.
Thank you.
Further comments from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item three is our 25-26 fee schedule. Mr. Miller.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. So this is the proposed fee schedule for 2025-2026. And if you'll see at your places was that one revision I made regarding the half-off and I, again, I admit I was a little red strikeout happy, I guess, as I was going through that, so. But again, part of the reason we do this adopted fee schedule is that the departments and the city uses the fees to determine revenues throughout the city in, in all of the departments and it's part of the budget process. But I wanted to really point out, in the building department specifically, I've been here over a year now and we really did an in-depth look to compare our community against other communities. And also, I looked at the budget for the last couple of years for the building department and what's proposed for next year. And again, we're supposed to be able to meet the revenue and the expenses and we're a bit behind. And so I wanted to make sure that we're able to make, make the building department fully operational and not rely on the general fund. And also to adjust our prices so that, you know, it's kind of a fine line for building, you want people to pull a permit and you don't want them to shy away because of the cost. We want it done right and we wanna be able to provide safe structures for houses and commercial throughout the city. So I did go through all of those prices and look at, of course, where we're at and also when was the last time we, excuse me, when was the last time we made an adjustment? And some of them, you know, 10 to 15 years. And of course, as you know, everything has gone up in, during that time. And so I wanted to make sure that we were able to do that. And then also in the planning section, I looked at some costs there to make some increases for planning. And specifically, like, the, the cost for our notices and the newspapers have gone up exponentially. And so we need to be able to cover those costs. And we still are using the escrow kind of portion to pay for a majority of our planning services, so that people deposit an amount in our, in the account to the city. And as we are paying the vendors and doing notifications for certain things, we take the money out of the escrow. If there's any remaining, then we do refund that to the applicants. So that's what the escrow account means in the, in the planning section. And then throughout the city, there were some small fee adjustments and one of the, if you'll look through, again, it was just a kind of minor adjustments throughout the city. Also, about five or six months ago, we did make a number of adjustments in Parks and Rec. And so we didn't need to make any of those adjustments either, so. But with that, I present these to you. Also, I'm going to do kind of a half-year look at to see how our, our revenues are doing in building and planning also, just to make sure that we're making those benchmarks, so.
Thank you. Okay, motion is in order.
I'd like to motion to approve the 2025-2026 fee schedule as presented.
Support. More from councilmember King. Further discussion from the table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Dole.
Mr. Miller, under the building department? I don't think there's page numbers. Sorry.
Okay.
So under both certificate of occupancy and under vacant structures, there's a non-compliance fee?
Yes.
I'm assuming that that's, if they don't apply for something and then they come in or whatever?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that along with the vacant structures, their registration for commercial and residential? Why aren't we increasing those? We need to, especially the commercial, we need to discourage them from remaining vacant and, you know, let's not make this easy for them, make them go out and get somebody in that business. I mean, not that, I, I think our vacancies are, I don't know what our rate is right now, but they're certainly, right. And, and the same with our residencials, but-
Actually, our residential, I do know, is about 2% vacancy throughout the whole city, which is really very good.
Yeah, and I mentioned our commercials, well under 10%, but I just think that, you know, I think that's something that we should increase and the non-compliance fee, they don't come in and do what they're supposed to with these vacancies, then let them, let them pay for it.
If you want to make any suggestions or amendments to that, it'd be up to the council.
Do we wanna, do you wanna wait to six months and see, see where we're at, see how it's?
Well, the six months was really for building and planning, it wasn't for this section regarding that. So I was really, when I talked about that, it was for the administrative fee. I know that the vacant structures ordinance went in place, was it five years ago now?
The vacant, it's when I first started, so it's three years that we raised it from like 400 to 1,000. I, I do think that the, the non-compliance fee should go up, out of any of them, because if we're telling them to do something and you're not doing it, I mean, what's the, what's the non-compliance? Like, I'll give an example, somebody got a ticket three weeks ago and our ordinance officer told them, "Don't do this," and they continue to do it. So do we have to wait 30 days for the compliance and then they get 30 days to just do whatever they want before they get that non-compliance fee?
Probably, yes. We always want to seek compliance.
For sure.
And if they don't comply, then we-
But maybe if they thought it was $500 instead of $250, they'd comply a little bit faster.
Sure, sure.
So I'm suggesting raising that fee from 250 to 500.
If I could just, though, before we make, we make that, fees must be tied to a cost that we can attribute to. So if there are two, if there's a particular areas in which we're concerned that the fee isn't meeting that cost, give us, if we could bring this, these, this, the second part, these amendments, and we'll just amendment fee schedule maybe in a week or two, or just give us a little bit of time to do our due diligence on the, because we have to be able to articulate the, the cost and the, and the purpose of the adjustment. And then we can do so and put the, our, our reasons behind it, place it in front of council and make those, so if there's any, like those-
Amendments, I do have questions, yeah.
Just let us know, we'll put some time and effort into researching those and get them to you guys.
Are you done, Kim?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
Mayor, I have more questions.
Go ahead, councilmember Carefotos.
I know the computer lab is on here, we don't even have the computer lab anymore, so we can get rid of that. Does computer lab for up to 30 people?
I imagine it's, is that from Parks and Rec referencing the-
Computer lab that we had 37 computers in.
Familiar with it. And the, okay, yep, I-
And then, the nuisance abatements and it says weed and grass control, is that the cuts that we were talking about when someone has to get their grass cut because it's too long?
Correct.
So it's $425 and I've made this comparison before, we have some larger properties that we're cutting the grass for them annually, I think that we should do that by the acre and it should be, if it's over an acre or more, that we're charging them a much higher fee. So if somebody has five, six, seven acres and we're cutting it, it shouldn't just be for $425, it needs to be for $1,000 an acre or something, so.
Maybe a base fee and then anything above that?
Yeah, like if we have to do it more than once a year or we're doing it all year long, I, I think that that needs to increase. We're not someone's landscaper, so if we're doing especially large properties, that needs to go up. And then, mobile food vendors, a resident asked me to ask this, we have it as per day, $25 a day. Other cities in our area do that by six months or 12 months, like they can just buy it by a year. So I don't know if we've ever looked into that. Like, it's, it could be like $500 a year and they get so many days, like it could be whatever. So I know that Westline does it that way, so I just didn't, didn't know if that's something to look into. And then the FOIA requests, there's no price. Is it by the sheet or?
I'm looking to see.
It just says Freedom of Information Act request and there's no, no, no dollar.
So a lot of the FOIA fees are set by the Freedom of Information Act statute in terms of what we charge, so we can't really fluctuate on that. A lot of it's, you know, like 10 cents per page, hard copy for, if we're billing hours in terms of-
Okay, that's what I was asking.
...redacting, it's the hourly rate of the lowest qualified individual to do that, so.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And then, over to rentals. So in my mind, rental properties are a business because we have multiple landlords in the city that own multiple properties. So like every business, every business in the city has to be inspected, get a license every year and they all have to have a fire inspection every year. But rentals, they only have an inspection every three years and they have no requirement for a fire inspection. I think that needs to change. It's a business. And if we're talking about a business getting a fire inspection, it's, most businesses only have people in it from nine to five. A rental house has someone in it 24/7. I know I asked the fire chief about that when he was here before and he thought it was a good idea too. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed.
I just don't know if I, the business versus residential, I think there could be something way above my ability to say, but I know that the rentals are established for homes and the costs have to justify it also.
Right, but there's landlords that own multiple homes and it definitely is a business if you're, have 12 houses in Garden City. And to say it's only $225 every three years, but as a business, everybody's doing that every year. So I think that it's comparable. And I, I definitely would think about the fire fee because the rest of us have to do that. I think we all need to have the same requirements. I think that's important to make sure that people are safe also. And then permit renewals, I see we took it from $30 up to $50. Is that when we have people that buy a building and they say they're going to fix it and they get permits and then it's, a year later, it's only cost $50 to get a renewal for all that stuff?
Yes.
I think that's an issue in Garden City where we get businesses that don't come in for a long time, and I think that should be higher, so that's something else to look into. And then, another resident asked me to ask about this, the water distribution system, that's sprinklers, right?
Yes.
So, everybody that has a sprinkler now is required to have a plumber come in and give them a certification?
Oh, the, like the three-quarter, one-inch?
Yeah.
That's just the, no, no, I'm sorry, that's just, that's for your, just for your, just for water at the house.
Okay, well, we had a couple residents that, that they were notified saying that they had to have a plumber come in and do an inspection on their sprinklers every year now, instead of just having someone come out and turn them on, so that's where the confusion is.
No, that, that's, I think it's a backflow prevention issue, and that's what it is, it is not, it's not our fee.
Okay, and then, it says heating and cooling, and it says, oh, new construction, okay, never mind about that one. And, that's it.
Okay, further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Last one, Mr. Miller, item four is our Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP agreement.
HP Snap, yes. So, this is, we have an agreement with a company to provide a service to renovate homes that we require, we acquire through the right of first refusal. And we have used HP Snap for the last three years, and in part of the agreement, we were able to give a one-year approval to continue an extension in one-year increments. So, that's why I'm here before you this evening to ask for the one-year extension and also kind of to highlight our working relationship with HP Snap. Part of the requirements is that we worked with them for three years and we, of course, they've done good work for us and they've complied with the requirements, is what I am hearing, glad to report that they do. We are, work well with them and they do complete the requirements of the city. And over the last couple of years, we've done actually, I think, a total of eight properties and renovated those houses and returned them to the tax roll, and HP Snap has done that. I want to keep them here, I want to keep somebody to do the program. As, of course, tax foreclosures have reduced immensely, I still feel that it's an important tool to have on our shelf to utilize because sometimes the houses that are acquired through right of first refusal are, properties are so bad, nobody wants them. And so, HP Snap has been able to take some of those properties and really turn them around and make them an asset to the neighborhood as opposed to a detraction. Of course, if you live next door to one of these eight houses, you know how important it is to have them fixed up and that it's a good program for us to follow. I will, you know, I monitor the tax foreclosures every year to see what we're going to get so that we're able to, of course, turn around a house that is kind of causing problems for the neighborhood and fully renovating it. It's fully renovated to construction quality plus, it is also done properly with permits and returned to the tax roll. So, I would like to recommend HP Snap for another year.
Thank you. Motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an agreement extension with HP Snap Investments to perform Neighborhood Stabilization Program acquisitions and renovations until June 30th, 2026.
Support. Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Comments from the table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos.
I love this company, I've been in a couple of the houses they redid and it was amazing. It made the neighborhood, it made all of the difference. And I just want to reiterate, so everyone knows, this company does not rent these houses, they sell them.
Correct.
Yep, okay.
Thank you. I just have a comment, I know when I came on in 2015, my first meeting was the 17 foreclosed houses that we were getting rid of or buying up and rehabbing, and since then, it's gone way down, but I think it's a good idea to keep, keep a company like this that, like Councilmember Carefotos said, has done a great job renovating and selling. So, I think it's a good deal. Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thanks, Mr. Miller, you can, you can rest now. Okay, item five is our citywide garage sale. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, now that we have done our community shred day a couple of weeks ago, it's on to the next event that I get a lot of questions about in the office, and that is, are we doing the community garage sale again, the citywide garage sale? So, in front of you is a request for council approval to waive fees for our, I believe it's our third annual citywide garage sale. The dates that we have picked for this one is Thursday, June 19th through Sunday, June 22nd. The past couple of years, we've done the week after Father's Day, so it's like, if you do it three, four times, it kind of becomes ingrained in people's mind that that's, you know, that's when it's coming around. As we've done it two years in the past, we kind of learn a little bit more each year, like what we'd like to do differently, what we'd like to change. The one thing that I would request, I'm requesting the public to do if you want to participate in the citywide garage sale this year, is starting tomorrow, so there will be no fees for the permits for the citywide garage sale, but just come into the clerk's office anytime from now until June 16th. Get a permit from us, you know, just we'll get your name and info and address, that way we know who's participating. Last year, we kind of tried, be like, hey, give us your name and address, we'll put a list on the website, but it was just kind of a list. So, we're hoping if you come in, get the permit, give us your contact information, name and address. I've been working with our communications department, we're going to try to make a little bit more of a nice interactive map, because when you see, you know, 1, 2, 3, Arcola Street, it's like, well, I might not know where that is, you know, but if you can see it mapped out, looks a little bit nicer, it's like, oh, there's a lot of sales in this quadrant, that's where I'm going to go. So, I would just, you know, like the residents to come in, get that permit anytime between tomorrow and June 16th. So, then we'll have our final map go live the week of the sale. The one other thing that I want to do is put in provisions for weather, because last year it was very, very hot. So, I did put a provision in there just in case three or more of the days are affected by either rain or heat. I looked, because I love data, the average high temperature for June 20th over the last 20 years, according to National Weather Service, is 81 degrees. So, but it's like, so if it's 81, 82, no, but if we get those nine, that 90-degree heat wave, then I propose the Saturday, Sunday, the following week be used as makeup days. So, no further ado, I would submit it to council for a motion.
Okay, motion is in order, Mayor Protem Dole.
Motion to approve the citywide garage sale event and waive the garage free, garage sale permit fees from June 19th to June 22nd, 2025.
Support.
Or from Councilmember Hughes? Discussion from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember King.
Mr. Smith, do we need to put the contingent days into the motion or?
No, that can be handled administratively, so it's mostly just to waive the fees for that period, but I kind of just put like, that is my plan administratively, like if we get the three days of rain, people will call, be like, yep, we're, we can do it next weekend.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos.
I just have one question, I had a couple of business owners ask if this includes businesses.
So, we didn't, we didn't put any provisions in there for businesses yet, because a lot of the, you know, businesses want to do a sidewalk sale kind of thing, it's through like a special event permit application. It's something we could look at in the future, but as of right now, I just, this is just for residential because if a business was to do a sale like that, it wouldn't come through the clerk's office, it would go through that special event.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item six is our on-street sales for the American Legion. Mr. Smith?
Yep.
Want to go over any of that?
Yep, next item in front of you is the American Legion contacted the clerk's office requesting to do their on-street sales for their flag sales as they do annually. And I said, okay, I will bring that to council. So, in front of you is their request for their dates, which would be Friday, June 13th through Sunday, June 15th, from 9:00 a.m. till 5:00 p.m. They would be doing this at the intersections of Ford and Middlebelt, Ford and Merriman, Ford and Vinoy, and Middlebelt and Warren. They have already, I noticed, they submitted today their hold harmless agreement, so I do have a stack of those already on my desk.
Okay, motion is in order? I'm sorry. Councilmember Dole.
I'd like to motion to approve a resolution to grant permission to the American Legion Riders to hold their annual paper flag fundraiser on Friday, June 13th, Saturday, June 14th, and Sunday, June 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. At the intersections of Ford and Middlebelt, Ford and Merriman, Ford and Vinoy, and Middlebelt and Warren, subject to the receipt of a valid hold harmless agreement by each participant in accordance with the city policy of on-street sales.
Support from anybody?
With.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Hughes?
No, Councilmember Witt.
Oh, Councilmember Witt, sorry about that. Discussion from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item seven is to approve a construction management of fire department renovation project. Mr. Gibbons?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council, I can invite the fire chief up as well as this project continues to concern his building. The fire station project started in the summer of 2023. It was anticipated and promised that it would be finished by the end of 2023. We are in 2025, it is not complete, there have been numerous project delays and performance issues. Because of that, a few months ago, we contracted with a metrics management to conduct a comprehensive assessment of the project status. They revealed some areas of concern, they proposed some mitigation strategies and outlined us a clear path moving forward to get it completed. We're well over a year when it was, from when it was supposed to be done, well, well, a year and a half from when it was started. Our fire department has done a commendable job of operating in less than ideal circumstances in their fire department, and I, you know, I want to thank them for doing it with grace. And I just, I believe at this point, I'm going to recommend metrics provide us essentially oversight and construction management of the finishing of the project, how this will work is, based on their assessment, they will help us and assist us in forming what needs to be done with the rest of the project and the various trades. They'll put together with our, they will assist us in putting together some bids, we'll bid each piece of the project out. That will, any that exceed $10,000, of course, will be a sealed bid, and then we'll open those bids, bring them before council for the lowest responsible bidder. And then, metrics will oversee after we approve that contract or finishing the project. And then, it's done, that the documentation of the issues that were resolved, those costs, and, you know, basically making sure the work is quality and the, the building is in good shape for our firefighters. I, I believe metrics has demonstrated they have the knowledge and ability to do this. I've asked for some, it's a pretty unique circumstances, so I've requested that they essentially do construction management plus advising as to what they see as we go along, so I can further identify where we stand at the project on each part, because now we're going to need just a much higher level of accountability, given that we're so far out from what it should have been done and the concerns we've seen. So, that is why I'm recommending metrics tonight, and I just, if the fire chief would like to add anything, he's been a large part of this project, and, you know, honestly, not just the firefighters himself, the fire chief has been sort of performing a lot of these parts of this role commendably in less than ideal circumstances, so. Something I just want to add with this metrics, we, we engaged with them a couple of months back, as you guys know. They do also have a web-based program that they keep up to date, pictures, progress notes, that we have access to, I know, city manager as well, so we can see live what they're doing, what their expectations are and what they've completed. So, it's not just, you know, when somebody shows up, we don't know. There will, they will be here daily to monitor that, to make notes and progress along. So, I think that's a huge benefit for us to be able to have an active role in that, not just, you know, kind of, I think the unfortunate part with the previous one is we, we didn't have that timeline, so I think that, you know, this will be a big improvement and hopefully, the, the completion of the station here shortly, so.
Okay, motion is in order.
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos.
I recommend action to approve the utilization of metrics management for construction management services on the Garden City Fire Department renovation project, according to the attached proposal.
Support. Or for Mayor Protem Dole? Comments from table?
Mayor?
Councilmember Carefotos.
While you're up here, chief, has there been any indication that the firemen are going to have to move back out into the trailers?
Not at this time. So, we have had some, some things done, some evaluations on it. They're going to continue to do some of the evaluations of the areas that are occupied, but nothing that looks like it'll displace what they're currently living in. So, we did have a air quality test done recently. There's some, a few areas that need to be addressed, but nothing serious that would require any movement of the staff outside the station.
Nothing about concrete coming up or anything that's not in the rooms that they stay in or anything?
Those are areas that are not occupied at this time. See addition to the back of the apparatus bay and then the addition to where the old kitchen was.
Did they give us a timeline? Like, from when the bids go out to when it starts to end?
Not at this time. Again, there's, there's going to be some fixing of things and then finishing, you know, I, given, you know, and the thing in my head has been, this station was built in 1962, and when it was built, it has served us very, very well for a very, very long period of time. So, if we're going to be doing this renovation while, and I, the firemen have actually, when I've walked over, even said this to me, is like, well, even if we have to live a little longer or much longer, as long as it's done right when it's done and we can enjoy this being here for a long period of time, that's what they'd appreciate, so. We, the chief and I are both very motivated to get it completed as soon as possible, but at the same time, not to sacrifice any quality or professionalism in getting it done. I think the, the avenue they're going to take, most importantly, is to stop anything that's causing any further damage. So, like, the roofing area that's allowing some water in to continue to potentially cause problems, they're going to address those things first, and those are most important, obviously. So, we're concentrating on those areas to get those remedied before we worry about like some of the other finishes and stuff inside the building.
So, we're addressing the roof first, right, so?
I assume that's going to be one of the first things that is addressed, yes.
Okay, and then, residents have been asking, where's the money coming from? Are we still have our grant stuff available?
We do, so, the grant total was 1.2 million. The existing balance that we have to draw on that is about $338,000. We do have some, some things that we have done since the last draw on it. It's just north around 250,000 will be left, but I do know there, that is just from what the construction cost was, so. We do have some, that's the fuzz that we have left in the grant to be expelled only.
Thank you.
Further comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no other business. Public comment, you will have three minutes, anyone that wishes to speak on non-agenda items? Not time to go back and forth, but make your comments. Mr. Jones? Please state your name. For those coming up beside Mr. Jones.
Michael Jones, Donley Street in Garden City. Just want to remind everybody that the Garden City Senior Center, this Friday, is having their Mother's Day celebration. The price has been reduced to $20, it's going to start at 12:00 p.m. Tea and coffee service will be provided by the fire and police department staff. There's a catered lunch, and I think it's going to be Hogs Barbecue, so it's going to be very good food. Entertainment and raffle prizes, you can register at Parks and Recreation, as last time I knew there were still some openings.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comments? More public comments? City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, just a thanks to our community development director, Matt Miller. As you see, he just continues to put in fantastic work with sidewalk grant. It's not easy to pull off all the things he's attempting to pull off in a very short period of time. He's doing a great job, and the LED grant, we just, it was a casual conversation we started about, hey, we should do that, and next thing you know, Matt had two grants already in the hopper and approved now, only just a few months ago. So, just a testament to his value to the city. And then, just one more thing, my condolences to the family of Lloyd Warrows. Lloyd and his family are just tremendous assets to this community, and he was a wonderful member and servant to the community, lived a life of service, and so did his family and his extended family. You know, I hope that someday I have my children and my family representing me so well out in the world that is a kind of a representation of who I was. So, I, you know, a fantastic person, and we're all, we're all sad enough for our condolences tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Nothing this evening other than condolences to the Warrows family.
Mayor Protem Dole?
I got a couple things. I was lucky enough to attend a play down at the high school this week, and I'd like to congratulate the crew and the cast of the newbies' play. What a great performance, I was totally amazed at what them young people did down there. I would also like to send my condolences to Marvel and her family. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hughes?
I too want to thank Mr. Miller for his hard work in finding those grants in a, it's been a sore, sore, you know, sore spot in the city for a while, and I'd like to see this moving forward, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt?
Just a welcome to Ms. Shepherd, have fun, good luck. Got a lot of ways to go, so we appreciate you being here, that's all tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember King?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Dole?
I have a few things. First, I also want to welcome Ms. Shepherd to, to the fold, I'm sure that you're going to love it here. I want to thank Kelly Bailey also, and I wish that you had been keeping track over the years of the donations that come in. There you go. Yeah, Kelly has very unselfishly taken this on for many, many years, and I know through the Southeast Veterans Stand Down for a lot of years, involved with that also, so thank you for that. I also went to see Newsies, it was fantastic. Like Mayor Pro Tem Dole mentioned, the, every time I go to a play at the high school, I am literally, I'm just blown away by the talent of these kids down there. And of course, Mr. Alan Bennett, you know, directing and just kind of overall seeing everything, he does a fantastic job. Also, my condolences to the Warrows family. I know that Mr. War, Mr. Waras would help. Quite a few years, he showed up at the Chili Cook-Off and volunteered. He'd come in with his lovely wife and Margot and the whole family and help us out with that. And the Mother's Day thing, I was over there today, they will, you can buy tickets, they set up until Wednesday morning, and then they really, they'll have to give Hogs accounts, so. And last but not least, I want to bring this up. I have to read it, because I don't want to miss anything. I would like to instruct our city manager and our city attorney, if need be, to investigate the actions of our previous city administration from 2018 until Matt Miller was appointed interim city manager. I believe that we need to closely examine the past six years to understand how we got where we are today with the water fund, the fire station construction issues, and the decisions that led to the structural deficit in the general fund. So in order to understand how to move forward, we need to understand how we got here. And, you know, was it mismanagement? Was it negligence? Is this misfeasance? What it is? But I think that we owe our residents, and we owe ourselves that knowledge. So, I don't know if, if anybody wants to discuss that or not, but that's what I would like to see our current administration do for us.
I support that direction.
I think we can just instruct the city manager to go ahead and, and look at that, and if, if there's an additional cost as far as bringing in the attorney or whatever, then that would be something that would come before us at a later council meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's fine.
And last but not least, I ran across this gentleman on the YouTube channel, and I kind of got addicted to it. He goes around, basically in Detroit and Pontiac, and he fixes up people's yards for them, the landscaping guy, and I can't remember, something Stockton, it's some weird name. So I've been watching him, and he has a phrase, and when we were speaking about the sidewalks and some people not getting them, and some people getting them and stuff, his phrase came to mind, and it's basically, he always says, it's not perfect, but it's better. And I think that that's where we're going to be with, with the sidewalks. Everybody's not going to get one, but we're working on being better, so, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Carefotos?
I just have a couple of things. One, I just want to let all the residents know that I see and I hear all the talk there is about the water fund, and I think that everybody up here is going to make, make up their mind when we talk about it again, and we hear what you say. So, everyone's putting a lot of thought into their decision on what we're going to do, and your opinion matters, for sure. And I also want to say, welcome to our new treasure. I'm so glad you're here. It's going to make a lot of other people's jobs much easier, Matt and Tim. And that's all I got.
Thank you. I just have a few things. I also want to thank Ms. Shepherd, or welcome Ms. Shepherd, and thank her for coming in. I also had kind of a busy weekend, saw Newsies over the weekend, which is, again, another awesome play to, you know, echo what the other council members that went there. Also, there was the current classic, I believe, last weekend, 80 teams in here, from all over the, I guess, all over the country. There's mostly Midwest, but out of state, out of city, I think some from Canada, so all over. Great tournament ran by the GCYAA, who also put on their opening day ceremony this Saturday, this past Saturday, and it was a little chilly, but they, the kids had a ball. The parade, they loved the parade, they get to walk out, they're on TV, a lot of, lot of good events going on there. So I want to congratulate all of them. The rubbish. Rubbish is not perfect yet, we're still working on it, it has gotten a lot better. One thing I do want to mention, though, in talking with DPW, and I know I've said, make sure you go to GC Fix It, and then let DPW know if, if they missed garbage, if they, yard waste, bulk pickup, if they're missing it. I guess what I should have said was, call them and let them know nicely. They're not the ones missing the garbage. There's really no reason, no excuse to, to call them and scream at the secretary or anybody else that answers the phone, because it's not their fault. They don't deserve to get yelled at over the phone because your garbage got missed. They're tracking it and trying to keep track of it. Please be a little courteous, they're trying to fix it, we're all trying to fix it. It has gotten better, it's still not perfect, we know that, but rudeness to our, our DPW people really isn't the way to help. Continue to call GC Fix It, or not call, but go online with them. We had our charity hockey game a little while ago, and one of our little bets was that the losing mayor had to wear the other city's hockey jersey for a council meeting. So as you can see on TV, Mayor Coleman wore, wore my jersey, so, best he's ever looked on, on, at his meeting. So hopefully we keep that going, because I don't want to wear it in October, when the next event will be coming up. I'd also like to extend my condolences to the Waras family. I've known them a long time. Mr. and Mrs. Waras have helped the city, volunteered with events for a long, long time. They have two, two kids that have retired from the city, one's back working part-time still, a daughter-in-law that is working for the city also part-time. They're very involved with the city, they do a lot, and Mr. Waras will be, will be missed, and condolences to their family. No further business, this meeting is adjourned.